...in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. Okay. I know y'all can hear me. Okay, we'll have a call to order and a roll call, please. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Good.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Turner?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're gonna go into an executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Okay. Yeah, six oh one. We'll be going into executive, shouldn't take long.
Um, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Okay.
No slow to motion.
Okay, so we get a roll call vote. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm adding to the side table. Okay, we returned from executive six thirty-three. Okay. Okay, y'all had a chance to look at the agenda. Is any additions or corrections you wanna make?
Um, since Ms. Bryant is not here tonight, I would like to suggest that we postpone the work session we were gonna do for the handbook.
Okay.
Um, either till, are we gonna have programs and stuff next month? Like singing from high school or anything? So we could probably just do it next month.
Yeah. Also, I wanna point out that on page four, at the very bottom, I added in writing Courtney Watkins to substitute service worker. Um, Ms. Corners on vacation, so otherwise she would've gotten a new sheet. All right. Can we have acceptance of the agenda for tonight's regular meeting with the correction?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Um, any other questions about this? We have a roll call. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the minutes of the regular meeting held on October the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two gonna have a, uh, a motion to accept it.
Uh-huh.
Second.
Is there any question? Do we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Special orders. Uh, Mount Healthy Teachers Association. Okay. Okay, uh, communications?
We do have a request to speak from Ms. Freeman, and I will let you use my mic to just... Ms. Freeman is a parent and is also one of our employees at North Elementary.
Hello.
Hi.
Again, my name is Cryla Freeman. I'm speaking on behalf of a parent first. Uh, we had a situation take place at North Elementary, and I feel like it was mishandled with communications to the community and to the staff. Um, I felt like the email that was sent out to the community was delayed much further out than what it should've been, and not enough information was given to the parents to make a choice to send their children to school or not. Um, and I was just wondering, what is protocol and how is it gonna be handled in the future if a threat is presented again? Um, because I don't know if you all are aware of the situation. Okay. So I just didn't know if that was protocol, the way the things were handled for the community to get an email or text message two hours after the staff meeting was held.
Um... That's really the sort of thing that the superintendent handles, not the board. So my understanding that the superintendent followed the protocols that we have in place, but, um, you know, and that's not to say you can't come here and express your concerns, but that is something that we defer to the superintendent to handle those kinds of situations.
And I had spoken with Ms. Freeman Friday, I believe, and I'd be happy to, again, if you want, after the meeting, just sit down and kind of go through it again. You were at North this morning as well, right?
I was, yeah.
So I'll be happy to meet with Ms. Freeman and go over that as soon as the meeting's over.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other names?
No other, this is the only one.
Next is the Great Oaks Board Report. Um, um, in, in remembrance, a moment of silence was held for Christine Garner, Executive Director of Ohio ACTE, who passed away earlier in the week, and for former Great Oaks Board President Bert Schulte, who passed away October the thirty-first. Bert Schulte served on the board from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen ninety-nine with four years as the board president. Twenty twenty-four budget and financial forecast, Ben Van Horn, Treasurer, C E, CFO, presented the five-year forecast for Great Oaks during the budget hearing meeting that took place at five P M. In his final presentation before retirement, Ben shared revenues and expenditures and explained forecasted changes based on economic conditions through fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Brian Brady, who the board previously appointed as the next treasurer, C O, CFO, started in January, was also present. High school application process, career catalog. Uh, Harris Snyder reviewed the new application process that is being implemented for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This O D E approved processes in line with other career tech centers to provide equitable access to programs. The twenty-three, twenty-four career catalog was shared with board members at the meeting. It is now available for prospective students and their families. Career specialists from all four campuses will be visiting affiliated high schools in the coming weeks to make presentations and distribute catalogs to students. Construction update. The Building and Access Committee held their meeting at Scotted Oaks to see firsthand a new entryway that provides better security. It was also an opportunity to see how security is being addressed on all four campuses with modifications to how people enter the building. Similar work is also nearing completion to the entry at Diamond Oaks. And what they've done is with that security, that when you come in the first set of doors, the second set of doors don't automatically open for you. Um, someone will have to see who you are and where you're going before they'll let you in. And I'm sorry I didn't get to give you a piece of paper. But I don't know what happened this thing, it's going crazy. Okay, legislative report.
Thank you. Um, they, they are starting to wake up from their, uh, summer of not doing a lot. Uh, House Bill four oh three, the House unanimously passed House Bill four oh three. This bill would require school district superintendents to file a report with the Ohio Department of Education regarding a teacher who has retired or resigned under threat of disciplinary investigation. Um, that bill is now headed to the Senate for consideration. House Bill one fifteen, the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee held sponsored testimony on this bill, sponsored by Representatives Catherine Ingram of Cincinnati and Adam Bird of New Richmond. This would eliminate the right of first refusal for certain schools in the acquisition of school district real property and modify rules regarding the sale of certain school property. As written, this bill would eliminate the require that a school district must offer to lease or sell certain unused real property to community or charter schools, STEM schools, and college prep boarding schools, and eliminate the right of first refusal for community charter schools, STEM schools, and college prep boarding schools involuntary sales of school district real property. So right now, the law says if we have property we're not using and a charter school wants to buy it, we have to sell it to them, and not only that, we have to sell it to them at market value. Even if somebody else offered us twice market value, they get first shot at it at, at whatever the price is deemed to be. Um, and this is introducing, uh, basically legislation saying, well, that's kinda nuts. So, um, hopefully this will go somewhere. House Bill six oh six, the Senate Primary and Secondary Education Committee held sponsored testimony on this bill, uh, sponsored by the same two, uh, Bird and Ingram, which would require public and chartered non-public schools to create an individualized seizure action plan for enrolled, for each enrolled student who has an active seizure disorder diagnosis. The bill would also require each school to have at least one employee trained in implementing seizure action plans and would require students to receive age-appropriate instruction on seizure disorders. Uh, so that's just in committee right now, it hasn't, hasn't gone very far, so we'll keep an eye on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we have a report of the treasurer?
Yes.
We received the scheduled, excuse me, scheduled bills for September twenty-two. I'd like to recommend the acceptance. Does a motion?
So much.
Certainly.
Any questions? Okay, do we have a roll call? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is a recommendation to accept the September financial statements. So who? Who was asked?
Okay.
Kilgore, Turner. You got any questions? Do we have a roll call?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is a recommendation to authorize the treasurer to request authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to be able to file a modified tax budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Do we have a motion?
Uh-huh.
Second. Do we have a roll call? Yes. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is authorization for the treasurer to request the county auditor to make advanced payment of taxes for the upcoming calendar year. Does a motion?
Uh-huh.
Second. Is there any questions? Do we have a roll call? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is a recommendation to accept the five-year financial forecast. Do we have a motion?
So much.
Second. Is there any questions on the motion? Do we have a roll call? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. So I wanted to give an update on a situation that happened today at our junior high. There was a fire in one of the bathrooms, and what happened? A student went into the bathroom and we believe put a cigarette, something like that, into the trash can that had a lot of paper in it. It started burning, the student ran out. Mr. Morris thankfully saw smoke, went in with a fire extinguisher, was able to put that fire out. The fire department responded quickly and, um, believe it or not, that small amount caused smoke to be all over the building, and it would take, they told us probably an hour or two, it was very cold outside, so we did make the decision to dismiss early. I wanna thank Heather with transportation. You know, I called Heather and asked how quickly, it's not as easy as you think to dismiss school early. So you have to get all the drivers back in, you have to get the buses between routes, so it really is a pretty big process. Heather was awesome, she's like, I can start getting buses there within thirty minutes. We took the kids to the cafeteria, of course, it was during lunch, so we were trying to feed as many students. I also wanna thank Frederica, she's not with us tonight, but she called her staff and said, let's get as many kids fed as we can. So they were eating as buses arrived, then they were put on the buses. I was over at the school just right before the meeting. The smell has gone, and so we're gonna be fine for tomorrow, but I did wanna just give an update on that. We did push out the information to our families, but that did occur. We also are very fortunate tonight that we have Student Council with us, and they have a presentation for the board, so I'd like to turn this over to them. And whoever would like can have my mic.
Good afternoon, Board. Um, so we are the Student Government, we are three members from the Student Government Association. Okay, um, so we are three members from the Student Government Association, and we are presenting this slideshow as a proposal for the Owls Closet, which is an idea we came up with at the Anthony Munoz Leadership Summit that we went to, um, a little while ago. So we have this slideshow here. So, uh, we have three of the five people here. I am Jensen Wakefield, the treasurer.
I am Deborah Carter, the Vice President.
I am Ruben Myrie, the Programming and Events Coordinator.
The problem is that we have a dress code, and a lot of students violate the dress code, as students do, and instead of finding other ways to deal with it, we put them in detention or our ISS, in school suspension for less than a day, where they're unable to learn in the classroom, and for, for the whole day, they're just, they're stuck in ISS, and they miss a whole day of learning. That's a problem. What's the solution? So, the solution is the Owls Closet.
So... So our mission statement is, the Owls Closet is a project with the goal of providing clothing to students in need. This, this need can stem from clothing insecurity or from a violation of the school's dress code. Students will have two options when taking out clothing from the closet. They can choose clothing to rent out until the end of the, until the end of the school day, or they can request to receive permanent attire that they can take home with them. This project aims to help our community and also decrease the amount of in-school suspension.
In order for the Owls Closet to run smoothly, we have devised two different ways for it to work. To keep track of clothes, we will have Google Forms, both Google Form templates record the student's lunch number and their full name. We'll also use these forms to create records of which clothing has been given out and which clothing we still have. For students needing temporary clothing to avoid ISS, we will lead them to the Owls Closet, and they will fill out the Google Form. They will then pick out the article of clothing that matches which article of clothing that was violating the dress code. For students who need permanent clothing, they will be able to fill out a Google Form that is slightly more detailed, mentioning different types of clothing along with the number of clothings that they might need, and then they will be able to file that Google Form to ask for a clothing power pack. These pa, these power packs will be able to provide these students with clothes permanently. This slide just goes more in detail about the temporary clothing process. So in order to make sure that all students return the clothes by the end of the day, we have devised a, um, a situation such as the take a book, leave a book. The students will go to the Owls Closet, they will pick out clothing, they will leave their offending clothing with supervising adults in the Owls Closet, and then they will return back to the classroom instead of going to ISS. If students need permanent clothing, they will, again, fill out the Owls Closet Google Form, then they will be called down to the cafeteria during the last ten minutes of the day to pick up their clothing power packs. Each power pack will be labeled with their name, and they will be able to take it and put it in their backpack before they leave, just in case any of the students need to catch the bus.
So we have asked a number of people to, uh, work the Owls Closet. Reciples, security guards, volunteer students, um, student government counselors, and substitute teachers. So we've asked them to supervise the process of the kids getting new clothes and filling out the form, uh, and have asked a couple volunteer students to do it for, during a study hall or a free bill. In, in return, they will receive, uh, community service hours that can go towards their, uh, the seals on their diploma. So that would help with graduation requirements. We plan on collecting the clothes by writing, uh, grants to a lot of, uh, clothing retailers. Uh, so these are four of the examples that we have. Um, and we're gonna also be taking donations from students with, if they're, you know, like wearable clothes, good quality clothes. Um, and then, so we're gonna be asking for grants for donated clothes from the clothing retailers.
Another issue to address with this Owls Closet is how the clothes will be cleaned. Since there is a temporary, uh, function for the closet, we will need to clean all of the clothes, and we have decided that the best day to do this would be Friday because it is the end of the week, and we would be able to provide fresh clothes for any student that decides to, um, to not wear correct clothes in school. We will, um, wash laundry each week on Friday. We will collect all clothes beforehand and make sure that we relock all clothes to make sure that they're there, and, yeah.
So in summary, we think the Owls Closet is gonna be a great idea. It's gonna help kids stay in classes, um, it's gonna reduce disciplinary action, it's going to provide kids who need clothes with clothes, um, in a way that I don't think we've really done before. Um, and effectively, I think it will make the dress code more accessible, and it'll be definitely followed more.
So to recap, the Owls Closet will provide students in need of clothes, both temporarily and permanently. It'll stop disciplinary action in detention. It'll, uh, by sidestepping the need for disciplining, disciplinary action for dress code violations, the Owls Closet will keep students in class and...
Do we have any questions? Are there any questions?
Yeah, did you take your raise?
Yeah. Um, so firstly, from students or anyone who's going to donate, really. Yeah. That'd be great, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. Anything else?
Um, was this, was this an idea that you guys all came up with?
Well, it was, uh, most of the student ambassadors who went on the trip, but was also me, a lot of student government people who went on the trip, so both of those two groups came up with the, uh, the ideas and put it into motion.
Very nicely done.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so happy that Student Government joined us today, and as you can see, this is just an example of some of the great work that our students are participating in, and we will definitely help them with the grant writing or whatever they need for this project. So exciting, we love to see this type of thing with our students, so thank you guys for coming. And they've been, Jensen, I know Ms. Carter, and I believe, I believe all three of you have been at different board meetings, haven't you? Like last month? Yeah. So we love seeing students at our board meetings, so thank you for joining us and presenting this. All right. The next informational item is we have received some more grants. We received two hundred thousand dollars from the U S Department of Education for reaching all students through literacy and language grants, so we're excited about that. That specifically is for the junior, senior high. And then our students have been participating in performance poetry through Elements, and Elements has given us a stipend that will help pay for the expenses to travel down to the city poetry contest, so we appreciate that extra money towards travel. Item B is the recommendation to approve the following new courses for the junior, senior high school for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The following courses, Data Science Foundation, Applied Mathematics, Fundamentals of Web Development, Computer Programming One, a Combined ELA One and Two, Spanish for Heritage Speakers, Leadership and Peer Restoration, and Telling Your Truth Two.
Do we have a motion?
Uh-huh.
Second. Is there any questions? Do we have a roll call? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the second reading for the recommendation, recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education Bylaw and Policy Changes listed below.
Do we have a motion?
So much.
Is there any question? Okay, do we have a roll call? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is the consent agenda.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second. Do we? Okay. Could we have a... No, first of all, you got any questions? About anything? Okay. Then, can we get a vote? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's the end of my report. Thank you, and that's the end of my report.
Okay. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, y'all got anything to say about that? Okay. Okay, the date of the next Board of Education meeting will be Monday, December the twelfth at six P M. That's the second Monday.
Second Monday.
Instead of the third. Okay, um, Ms. Turner, you had suggested that B be, uh, rescheduled for next month, so we'll skip having the work session before it can repeat. Okay, is there anything else to be brought before the board? If not, um, take a motion for adjournment.
So much.
Thank you. They just want to say.
I'll, I'll second it too, if I have to.
Ain't do both. Um, okay, no, uh, Stephanie did.
I'll second.
Okay. I, I know you don't have any questions, so, all in favor? All right, no polls? All right, this meeting is adjourned.